...of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is anyone here open for Sean?
No.
Sean is a select. One on. Okay. Let's hope. It's being recorded by one for two. Has anyone had a chance to look at last month's minutes? Have you had a chance to look at last month's minutes?
Can you call to have your...
Yeah.
The fans just make it too hard to hear each other.
I did have one change. Last month I had thanked John and Vela. But I also thank you, which basically... So that his name should add that you thank him so much.
Any other changes? Now? Oh, I was about to move to accept. Oh, okay. We spoke up. We do that after we...
I have one other. The appropriate title for Sean is Select Board Liaison. I found that rid of the term board selection.
Oh, yes. We can't have that.
Big deal.
Also present. Also present. And also present. Oh, oh, oh. Oh, okay, I see, okay. Select Board Liaison.
So I think what we would be looking for is a vote to accept the minutes with the two amended.
With the amendments?
Yes.
So we're going to make a motion to accept the minutes as amended.
That three minutes as...
I accept it.
And I have to go to the vote now? Yep. We have to take the vote.
Yes. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Yes. So voting. The next is the director's in the pool.
Sure. All right. Hi, everybody. In September, we had an average daily attendance of 58.15 people and 125.25 volunteer hours for work. We had a total of 1,267 event swipe-ins. And the September ride statistics are not available yet. They should be available for the next meeting. Those have to come through the WRTA because the daily schedule changes a little bit on the computer. So I don't have the exact number until they get back to me. I think quite a few of you were in attendance at the Moon Festival last week. It was really successful. We had 80 people come to the Moon Festival. And we also had a table of performers from Northeastern and two tables of the high school volunteers that are members of the Chinese National Honor Society at different local high schools. Tammy, our Asian Outreach Coordinator, taught people about the Chinese Moon Festival. We had dinner. We had the Lion Dance performance, which was from the Northeastern students. And we also had a high school student that did a traditional Chinese dance. And people were able to try Mooncakes. The program was free, and I did get a grant through the MCOA to provide this event. The Muglums came and performed. I don't know if anybody here was in attendance for that. They were a nine-piece band. It was kind of like a fun. They approached us to perform, which was great. They donated their time. We had 50 people come. They handed out kazoo's for people to play along. They were playing the washboard and the jug. They had a bunch of like interesting instruments, which was great. We did have Bella the Barn Owl from Gia Quinto's Wildlife Rescue come Thursday. She was great. The library's book club has started to meet the senior center every month. So we're sharing a book club with the library. One month will be at the library, the next month will be at the senior center. So we had about 10 people for that, which was great for the first time. We had our breakfast with the police. And we were actually introduced to some of the administrative employees that don't often make it out here. So the first is the jail diversion social worker, who is, her name is Janelle. She's hired through Advocates. And then we also met the administrative assistant to the chief and the person who sits at the front desk when you go to the police station. And she handles all the record requests and stuff like that. And Phil Kitteridge did a really spectacular presentation on the history of Westboro through colorized photos. So he has a bunch of historic photos that he has gone through and edited to kind of mirror what they would have looked like at the time. And it's kind of a moving tour through Westboro. Our shy open enrollment appointments are all almost taken. I'd want to say we have two left for the open enrollment period. And if those two appointments are not taken by the time this meeting is over, I would be surprised. We are recommending people reach out to other senior centers in the area as soon as possible because a lot of the other senior centers are also dealing with appointments being full. And that picture up top is from the Asian Outreach trip to Burnwell Orchard. And the next picture, that is Bella the Barn Owl. That was here to talk about wildlife conservation. It was great. So October 21st, which is tomorrow, the senior center supporters are hosting the Halloween celebration. It is an early dinner to accommodate for town meeting tomorrow night, which we are encouraging everybody to go to. Town meeting will be at seven, starting at 7:00 at Westboro High School tomorrow evening. On October 27th, we have origami. On the 28th, we have a dewali and dinner. That is part of the same grant that the Moon Festival was. So that will include a free meal, performances, and education. We are hosting the watercolor painting class with Audrey, who is a really wonderful high school student. And we've been very lucky to find her. November 7th, we have the CPR class. You only have to pay for the price of your certification. And I think we have two spots left for that class. November 10th is the Veterans Breakfast here at the Senior Center. The 15th is the Senior Center Supporters Holiday Fair. It's a Saturday. November 17th, we're hosting a Boston Post-Cane Celebration for, that's given to the oldest resident of the town to celebrate that occasion. So Bunny Karen will be turning 104. She has lived all 104 for years in the town of Westboro, which is great. So we are going to be having a birthday party for her. And the town clerk will be giving her the pin for the Boston Post-Cane. And the Select Board will also be writing a proclamation to celebrate the occasion. So that is at noon on the 17th. It is open to the public. You just ask people to register ahead of time so we know that we have enough birthday cake. And on December 23rd, we're going to be doing the Senior Center Holiday Dinner. American Mahjong is a newer group. They're meeting every Wednesday at 1:00 in the lobby here. Bollywood Dance is every Thursday at 1:30 at the Community Center. And we just started a skip-o game night at 5:30 PM every Tuesday. And the last is just some pictures of some of the activities that we've had recently. Lantern making, which was a part of Moon Festival. People actually made lanterns and then had them as decorations at the Moon Festival. Some of the pictures are from the Moon Festival, from the Asian Outreach apple picking, the Muglums, and the painted watercolor painting class. That is, that's it for me.
Any other questions?
It's a card game that's kind of like Uno. It's kind of like the game Uno, it's a card game. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I don't know the rules, but I can play it.
It's fun.
Yeah, there's people that know the rules that can teach you how to play it, just not me.
I played that one a quarter of a year ago. It's coming back.
They have fun with it, I don't know.
I probably find it in the basement somewhere, they're going to be instructing. Any other questions? Motion to accept.
The next discussion kind of started last one. We got involved. Since then, between Guido and I, we've gleaned some information to share. It looks like I don't know if you recall, but last month, Kim suggested looking at our website and looking at the COA budget. And at the end of that budget, it shows short and long-term goals. And along with that, I don't know if you can see it, but we had also done a needs assessment survey a couple of years ago. And then from that, a separate group was set up to look at all the responses from that survey. So two of our members were on that. Bill Lynch and Bob Marshall. So I have, I think in the package you have the implementation plan that they had developed. Is that being properly...
No.
No? Well, they had developed an implementation plan of what they found, the findings of the survey. So... Could you look at this? Can you read it? The new implementation?
I can make copies of it. We're actually having internet issues, so we're not able to download part of it. But I can make copies of it.
Okay. But we do have a couple of things here now. Is this in your packet though?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, this shows the short and long-term goals from the council. Really, we have thought through most of these measures. But these are in FY of '26 budget, council budget. Okay.
I think most people, how many people need a copy of those? So...
I do.
Okay. We've got those to go up there. Oh, your time. Yeah, so just, does anyone do?
I didn't have a copy of that.
I have.
Yeah. And you probably have too, because you're on the...
Yeah, we did.
You and Guido developed that. This is something that Bob and Guido worked on after that implementation plan came out. So they only, at this point, they were only looking at the first year of it. So this just covers the first year of the...
Little background for newer people here. Most of us have been around over two years, so we know about the survey. It was a townwide survey that was done by the town. And I forget how many, but it was done by UMass. An aging group from UMass Amherst that was contracted by the town to do the survey. Survey went out, they came up with a report with a list of recommendations that resulted from the survey itself. And there was a lot of good information there. So the town manager then created this senior needs assessment implementation working group to take the recommendations from that survey, that report from UMass, and created this 12-page, well, with the cover, 12-page report that organized the recommendations into annual goals and then actions for each of the goals. And they then prioritized them or categorized them in terms of, you know, high, low, medium, and low priority. So what, and there was a working group. There was a townwide working group, of which we had two representatives, plus our director. Alma was on that. Kim was the, Kim Foster was the moderator, I guess, of that. Shelby Marshall was also on it. One at-large community representative, Joyce Gallinoff. And Ed Bay from the Affordable Housing Trust. That was the committee that came up with these prioritized goals based on the recommendations from the survey. Bob and I got together and we went through this document and pulled out all of the year-one high-priority items. This was in, we presented it in January of '24. So we did it, but in fact, I picked the note that we met in December of '23. So this came out at our January meeting. And we discussed getting involved in, you know, how to spread it out amongst the council members with these various goals. But then, very soon thereafter, at the March meeting, the town meeting, we had the conclusion of the purchase of the new building. And so that kind of changed a lot of our priorities in that it satisfied many of the recommendations that were made by the UMass report. Or simplified, like Bigwood was, we need more space. I mean, that was a very high, highly commented item in this survey. Well, that, that, we solved that, but again, in time. So we kind of got distracted, if this is what I'm going to say. And we didn't really do much more against this prioritized list of items. But it's still worth, you know, we think, going through it and checking off the items that have been done. A lot of, you know, a lot of them have already been addressed in the last two years by the staff here at the Senior Center. And that's what's really summarized in the budget report. As you can see, if you look at those short-term goals that were for this, this little year, just started in July, it just started in July. One of them was to evaluate the current transportation service delivery models and explore expanded partnership with the Worcester Regional Transit Authority. Done, right? And so they've already been addressing. And that was also, transportation was one of the biggest items, again, in the recommendations of the UMass report, that we needed better transportation. So again, a lot of work was done here. It has been, you know, been put aside for a while. If we're going to go forward, we should use these two, you know, the UMass report and the implementation plan for that report that was put together by the committee almost, almost two years ago.
Excuse me. So does everyone need a copy of the implementation plan? Yeah. No, the... This...
Oh, I love that.
Oh, yeah.
It is online, and I can send everybody, like, as you say, you won't have it today.
That has to happen.
Not today.
Oh, no, today.
We're having a...
I'm just going to take the...
Yeah, we're having an issue. We can't really send everyone services.
Because that one really has its entirety. And so what Bob and Guido started doing was just passing off what is related to council on aging and senior center. And they started doing that. And then we got, I don't know if distracted, but the priority was the community center. And we had all of the, we got the community center.
Diane, may I relay that to the center?
Oh, sure.
So what Diane just added to what I'd said is not only is it in high priority, you know, high, medium, low priority by year, it also is a primary champion. And so, you know, some of these things, again, have nothing to do with the senior center, or very few, but there were some. But in some cases, the council on aging is identified. In some cases, the senior center is identified. In most cases, it's both. And other groups, some of these recommendations had to do with going out to the, joining forces with other organizations in town. So the library, for example, might have been a primary champion for some. So we took all the ones that were council on aging and/or senior center, along with the high-priority year-one, and that's what this one sheet is.
So what I pass out to you is just really the first thing that we were extrapolating at that time when we got onto the community center. Because there are a few more pages of this, but you can see it all in the implementation plan for all departments. And you'll see on the side, like, COA or senior center, like, different departments. Just to get a little view. I made enough to get copies of the implementation plan. That's kind of the overview. That's the overview of our goals. At least on this page, pretty much done. On this page. We had, I recall, we did have, one of our meetings we talked, we talked about goals, Guido, was we had this other sheet. And we did talk about, we had a TV show on the, on the Westboro TV. There weren't a lot of hands that were up to do that.
So what Diane is saying is that the fourth item down on this sheet, goal number five, said seek additional input from the community related to desired programs and services. And up till about seven, eight years ago, there used to be a Westboro TV program. Karen's nodding her head enough. That we used to have a member of the council, along with his wife, take the monthly newsletter and, you know, turned it into a half-hour TV program on Westboro TV. When Bill moved out of town, he left the council as well, obviously. And that effort went vacant. So what Diane brought up was, well, let's resurrect that. We'd look for volunteers, a member of the council that would be willing to do that, to work with the director, to get the next month's activities and brought up to, as a way of getting the information out there and soliciting more information. The other item that was recommended, now in a sense been done by Kendra, we had suggested a Tuesday morning coffee with the council to have members of the council be here and have people come and have coffee and whatever to talk with us. But now Kendra started that up, coffee with the director. I think that checks off that box. And maybe more of us, you know, attend that so that we could get that primary input, which is the, the goal here was for us, the council, to get our, you know, get input from the townsfolk directly ourselves.
Those are just a few of things that we brainstormed at that time. If anybody wants to go on TV and do this. Hand it right down.
Okay. Am I allowed to ask questions at this time?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so a couple of questions. I'm going to be one of those annoying board members. I do see that one of the, one of the short-term goals was to implement additional functionalities within my Senior Center software, including online program registration. I was wondering how that's going.
So we have expanded what we can do with my Senior Center. So now we have the ability to send out the text messages and the phone calls that are automated that let us, let people know that things are either coming out or something is canceled, or just to get the word out there. As far as the online program registration goes, it's not necessarily just us that would have to work on that. It would have to somehow get onto the town's website. And we don't have a way to do that in the immediate. And I think part of it is also because some of our programs require you pay in advance. And we don't have a method to take credit cards. So we still need someone to come in to either drop off a check or cash. It's something that we're exploring. It's just not as easy as saying that we want to do it. There's a lot of departments involved.
Does the rec center have a system, or do they do the same thing?
They, so they do, but they do not use my Senior Center. They have something called MyRec or something. Rec, it's a recreation-based software. We use my Senior Center specifically because there are ways to add someone in as a good client where it's confidential. So that means that if a volunteer is registering people for programs, they can just see the surface-level information as opposed to all of the notes that might be in there about somebody, about their social service needs. So our service allows us to differentiate different parts of the website and give certain accesses to the people that are working or volunteering here and not full access.
I'm glad we know it's a priority because I can say that, so in preparation for this meeting, I was like, oh, I'm going to go to every event once, check them all out, you know? And so I made myself this nice sheet. And even I, I mean, even I was overwhelmed by it. I'm like, okay, register for this, pay for this, register, don't pay. I had like, like 15 things. And all I know is, wait a minute, I have to go to the Senior Center with cash? Like, that was odd to me. So I, maybe there's a way we can do something with Venmo or...
Again, it's not as easy as just wanting to. It has to come through the town finance department and the town's accountant, which we don't have a full-time accountant right now. There's an interim. So it's a little bit more than just an e, there's no easy solution, but it is something that we're working on and something that the town administrators are aware that we're hoping to change. I personally would prefer that we get away from taking cash in all forms because we have to, you know, that's just kind of another thing for staff to deal with. But I also don't think it's just as easy as saying we won't take cash anymore. But yes, that is something that we're working on. But we have greatly expanded what we're able to do with my Senior Center.
And I've seen that, so that's been great. Thank you.
I know, I have asked... It's been shutted down. It's getting louder. I don't really know how that's happening.
I have two other questions, since I'm new here, is what do you need? I mean, I would just like to know, how can we help you as a COA board? I guess that's really the question. How can we help you do your job?
Yeah, I mean, I think what we need sort of here is a little bit, maybe... Yeah, I, I mean, I think what we need sort of here is a little bit, maybe more involvement with the members of the council participating in some of the programs and, and sitting with people, talking with people, being kind of an extra set of eyes and ears for stuff that, like, if there's a program that happens at the Hudson Senior Center and people really love it, you know, maybe that's something that we should offer here because if people are really liking it. Just getting an idea of what other communities are doing that's going well. And maybe also some of the stuff that we're doing that is not going well, or there's people that are frustrated. They really like, you know, they really like, uh, yoga class, but they don't really like what time it's at. Uh, it's too early in the morning or it's too late in the day. Those are things that we can work on to adjust to make it a little bit more of a, an all-inclusive sort of offering. Um, but I, I think that that just comes with time too, you know? Uh, and it's not always as easy, uh, it's not as easy as just chatting with people sometimes. It takes a little bit more than that, but I think that that would be a really big help for us.
Oh, sorry, one more question. I know the printed newsletter went away. Is it, is it gonna come back?
Yes, it didn't. So it didn't necessarily go away, uh, per se. We had an issue with the contract, uh, with our newsletter distributor, so we are working on securing another one. Um, which is with anything, uh, municipal government is not as easy as just, uh, going for it. Uh, but we are doing it online and ha- we do have some printed copies. Um, but I think, you know, within, uh, the next month or so, we should have something a little bit more stable uh, to, to have a new newsletter distributor.
Perfect.
Yeah, hi. Uh, I have a question about the newsletter. Um, it comes out monthly?
Yep.
And I know for a while it came out, it came out so late that you couldn't really do some of the, um, activities that were in the newsletter. Um, I think that's gotten corrected somewhat. But is there any thought of going to two months at a time? Because, you know, it's like, uh, sometimes you wanna see things two months out so that you can put it on your calendar and?
As it stands, we have not enough room for the programs every month. Um, and I think if we were to do two months together, we would really struggle to get everything we needed out there. Um, but since I've been here, a- as far as I know, you know, the newsletters should have been out a week to two weeks in advance. Um, and Kristen and Mary Ellen have done a really good job of making sure that it's on time, well, it's early, um, so that people can see by the first of the month, all of the programs for that month. Um, so it's not always perfect, you know, with the post office, things like that, but we have tried really hard to get it out before the month starts and I think that we've been able to do that.
And, and just, uh, in that regard, when they post it, uh, online, uh, you can be notified that it's there.
Yes, yeah, you can, you can sign up with the email list to get a notification that it's available online if you would like.
Kendra, I would just like to say, I think that the system that's in place right now is, it's better than no news. And I think that Kristen and yourself and Mary Ellen have done a great job pulling this together. It's in my mailbox.
Thank you. It's, uh.
I have no, no complaint about it.
The other thing that, uh, so as we've been without a publisher and have been trying to figure it out, uh, something that has been brought to our attention, which is a little bit harder to kind of manage, is, uh, people are really liking that it's not shiny and almost every distributor prints it on like glossy news, uh, like a, like a more of a magazine paper. Uh, so now I'm having a hard time finding someone who will print it on a regular paper, uh, which is what we've had the request for. So.
Just as a comparison, I belong to almost every senior center in the area for various particularly art programs. They all do the same thing and they all have only one month.
Yeah.
They were historically much earlier than here, but now this is really good, coming out a couple of weeks ahead of time.
Undulated, um, to one of your goals here, which was expand the joint sponsorship and promotion and all of that. I just wanted to highlight a pro- a very successful program that's available at, uh, basically Christie has this available, and that was the, um, Westboro Civic Leadership Academy. It might be, I mean, it, it exists now and they're not doing it because the, they had to like cut their staff a little bit, but it was great. It was ten weeks at, uh, ten different evenings where we would meet with like the police department, the fire department, DPW, public health, and it was great. And that program, like, it could literally be lifted and, and kind of brought to here. So that might be interesting when you're talking here kind of about bringing all these departments to here. It, it might be very interesting.
Yeah, I, I don't know that we have the staff at the moment to take something a- as like heavy duty as that on, but I think we could probably work something a little bit simpler, uh, for just us. But I also think that at the town level, if they decide to bring that back, then I would definitely want the senior center to be involved in whatever that looks like.
In fact, the, uh, UMass report, uh, recommendations specifically mentioned that, uh, program and how it could be, uh, merged, uh, or to get the council on aging more involved with it. So I forget the exact context, but it, it was written up in there in that specific, uh.
I've been very passionate about this whole town, um, to be honest.
Yeah. No, I, I definitely think, um, in the future, if that's something that the town hall is able to bring back, we would definitely wanna participate in.
That would be all my questions for the moment.
I think Karen has a question.
Sorry, through the chair, I know this is out of work, but, um, I was just gonna comment on the Westboro TV show, um, because I wanted people to know, I know it feels like, oh, gosh, the camera, but, um, uh, the La Progs did that show for so long and they were wonderful and they loved it. They loved coming in and we make it really comfortable for you. Um, there's a teleprompter so you can read what you're saying, so you don't have to have everything memorized. Um, and it was a really. Yeah, it was a really nice way of bringing the programs to life a little bit, so.
What's involved?
I would, I mean, basically, we would take the newsletter and they would have the newsletter on the screen and they could read what was coming up. So, you know, be there for the St. Patrick's Day lunch. It's gonna be an amazing event and, and so it was a nice way for people could just listen in if they wanted. They could see it on TV and they really loved doing it. It was, it wasn't something where they came in and it was, I mean, they really had a fun time with it. So if you, any of you are interested or you can find a sidekick that might be interested, um, you could at least try it out and see. I, I just think it was a nice way to reach out to people, to let them know all the things that are going on. Made it a little more personalized. The newsletter also great, but just kind of added that extra. So I can give a little plug for that program. Um, I would love to get it started up again.
Karen and her, uh, the two young men that work for her are really great too. I did someone's cable show, um, and I wasn't too excited about doing it, um, but they were really good at, uh, at making me feel comfortable. So I'm sure that they would be.
Like how, is it an hour, once a month?
It, I mean, it wouldn't even take an hour, but yes, once a month, and it was more like thirty minutes maybe. I mean, we try to keep it short and, um, yeah, no, that was about it.
I do recall Bill, uh, Bill is here, by the way, the, he's our shine counselor.
Okay.
So you could ask him directly if you're interested, but my recollection that, uh, he was saying it took him about an hour to two hours preparation. They would literally write a script. So they didn't actually read the newsletter. They took it and wrote it into a, his and hers lines. So his words, uh, his wife's words, and they'd go back and forth and, uh, write it up as a script and then it would come up on the teleprompter. The actual recording was a half hour or whatever.
And you just read from the teleprompter?
Right.
Let's discuss it. If it helps, I'd be happy to. I can be a hand like the best of them.
We, Bill used to start with a joke, so you're gonna have to come up with a joke first.
That's right. That's, that's a deal changer.
Any other comment?
So I'm actually the shine counselor in Southboro and I've done Southboro cable TV, usually just before open enrollment every year, to let people know what's new coming up for, for the Medicare open enrollment period. So that's another thing that we could do in Westboro that would be, uh, I think added value to people that listen.
So you've already been on, on the show?
Yeah, well, you can just.
Are you volunteering to be on?
Maybe two of them.
Now that you brought it up.
Since I've done it three times, I can do it in my sleep, right?
I'm on the Westboro TV board as well, so this is the perfect integration of energy, potentially.
Any other comments about the goals to be, it'll be an ongoing discussion anyway as we go on. But that's how we got what we got now. We just thought we'd show you that there was an implementation, there was a survey implementation plan and from that, uh, Bob and Guido, um, went through the whole plan to pick out what was related to COA or senior center. That's what they did. So we just thought we'd bring it up today on that. So this would be an ongoing thing, you know?
What needs to, to be done?
What what?
What needs to be done?
Right at this moment, um, kind of treading water, I guess, you say?
I guess I, I would suggest that the first thing is everyone to read through the entire report cause again, some, this team went through and already came up with, uh, uh, you know, representative goals that implement the recommendations of the townwide survey. So there's a lot of work that's already been done, but again, time has passed and maybe not all of the priorities may have changed and I think we should, uh, everybody should read through this and look at it and see if it's, uh, you know, still applicable in terms of the way the priorities are organized. The actions probably are, uh, you know, some things may have already been done and we can, you know, check those off. Uh, but the priorities, uh, you know, may be slightly different now just because time is, uh, has changed. So I, I would suggest that again, everybody read this and then come back at another meeting and have a recommendation, you know, of top ten items and come up with, uh, with that and then start assigning them. We may already have one of them done, have our show.
So is a lot of it on hold because of the situation with the built, new building? And the fact that, you know, the library's there temporarily until their renovations are finished? And so in terms of the senior center being able to move in and, I mean, is that why things are sort of treading water?
But they had, they started other working groups, one of which was, you know, the, how, how are we gonna fit into that building? And so there was a, a working group that, uh, met weekly, uh, starting pretty early, uh, you know, soon after the town meeting, uh, voted to, to go forward. The architect was hired and, uh, and we've had other, other things going on. I, I can't recall the exact, uh, why we stopped working on these items directly.
I think we, yeah, we really got involved with, with the architect and, and the, what the new first floors would look like and it, it kind of pushed this aside.
I, and I think too, a, a lot of what is on here is being addressed in some way by staff. Uh, you know, we have greatly expanded our exercise offerings using the community center, so we've been able to do that. Um, the donuts with the director has allowed us to kind of get some input. Uh, you know, I would always love more. I'd love a wider variety of people coming to that program. Uh, but I, I think between that and the bagels with the board where residents are invited to come and express, you know, what they're looking for, to select board and also hear about what's coming, uh, in front of the town has been really great. Uh, we have definitely expanded the sponsorship and, and programming with other departments. You know, we're working really closely with recreation. We're working really closely with the library. Uh, we've made, uh, a lot of, uh, sort of, we've done, been able to do a lot with the different public safety departments. Uh, have the fire department here, have the police department here. So I, I think a lot of it's being addressed. I think a lot of it is also stuff that's ongoing. Um, so I think, you know, that's a goal and while we're addressing the goal, it's not, I think it's always gonna be one of the goals and a priority here. Um, I mean, I, I would say the housing, affordable housing is probably the most difficult for us to address. Uh, unfortunately, there's, aside from advocating for more affordable housing, there's very little that the council on aging can do in that respect. Um, it's an issue. It's an issue across Massachusetts. Um, you know, I, the, I don't know exactly how long the waitlist is for affordable housing in Westboro, but I know it's very, very long, um, whi- which is, is definitely a difficult thing and we see kind of the effect of that here sometimes. Um, but again, I, I think, aside from advocating for affordable housing, there's unfortunately not a ton for us to do with that issue and I also don't see that issue going away anytime soon. That's gonna be an issue for quite some time.
But that's where the council could come in. The senior center staff, you're right, has limited it. But, uh, we as a council could be doing the advocacy. We've had the Housing Trust, Affordable Housing Trust, uh, here several times over the last couple of years to give us an update at, to what's going on and, and see if there's anything that, uh, we can do to, to help them.
Right, I was gonna suggest that we had them in here about a year ago and so we should have them in periodically just to give us a, like a, even an annual update as to where they are. Cause we have had them in the past. So that could be on the list too.
And Kendra, you could tell us also, uh, how, uh, the need that comes across to you. I mean, do you get, you know, one or two a month? Do you get people that are having difficulty getting houses? Is it eight or ten a month? I mean, you, so you could give us information and maybe we can work with the, uh, with the Housing Trust and other organizations on that. I mean, that, that's the kind of thing that, you know, we could separate, uh, the, the responsibilities, which is what I think the, this working group had done. That's why there's both COA and senior center as two separate responsible parties on these bills.
Like I said, it'd be an ongoing thing.
So who would reach out to someone from the Affordable Housing Trust?
What was his name?
Ed Bay.
Oh, okay, thank you, Bob.
Yep. E D H N.
It would probably make the most sense to have Diane invite them to a, a future meeting.
Yeah.
Perfect.
Yep.
That would probably be the, uh, what would make the most sense.
I'll give you Ed's contact info. I've got that.
Okay.
Can I just have a quick question about the, um, transportation? Um, and the, and the notes say that the September data wasn't ready yet, but at our next meeting, can we have, cause for me, I don't, I haven't seen pre- used, can we have the data from Jul- I think it started in July?
Yeah, that has been in, uh, all of the directors' reports. So if you look back at the minutes, um, that are online for the council on aging.
Okay.
Uh, July and August will be there. And then at the next meeting, I'll have Septembers.
Okay, thanks.
Darrell, I'm gonna step in for him. Darrell has been asking for a chart that, uh, that shows like six months worth of history, just so you can see how things are trending.
We don't have six months though.
Well, I, I mean, the point is.
So the reason that I've held off is I, I think that the three months that we have is not enough information, um, to, sort of have a good comparison. And I think as we get, you know, into six months, it'll be a little bit more clear what the data shows.
Has there been any, any change on the average daily attendance, including the community center? Cause before, it wasn't included, the activity fair.
It's still not. We don't have a good way to capture it. Um, we have, we have a volunteer now that will be inputting paper lists into my senior center from the community center, but it's not a perfect science, uh, cause there are people who come in that might not sign in. Uh, on the paper list, if they're coming in late, they won't, you know, stop to sign in.
In my experience, everybody's accounted for.
Yeah, so we do have someone who's, uh, new, someone who's volunteering in the office. Their new focus is making sure those numbers will be put in.
Okay. Uh, is there a good reflection? Press your vote to accept any other, or discuss other goals or, cause we kind of all did it.
Yeah, I mean, I guess through you, it would just be. Yeah, I mean, I guess through you, it would just be, you would have to ask for approval of the goal-setting conversation.
It's a whole different type of conversation than usual, so. Make a motion to accept the report on Council on Aging goals?
What are we approving?
Yeah, I'm a little confused.
I don't think Robert's rules of order requires that.
I don't think there's anything to approve, this is just a discussion.
I wasn't sure how to address this.
It's just a discussion.
Well, the real question is, is there an action that we should be assigning the council or to do for the next meeting in relation to the goal?
Well, hopefully I can get this copied and they can get ready, they can review it all, and they have any questions going further after reading it, and continue that discussion.
In the meantime, how about getting, reaching out to that contact, the Affordable Housing Trust, so that we can set him up to come talk to us? Sorry.
What, Housing Authority contact?
To reach out to.
If someone's going to reach out, so that we can set him up to talk either at the next...
I have it as a future, on the future agenda. I'll see when he's available, he or she is available, and, but I have it on as will be a future agenda, just not, don't know exactly when yet.
So I think the point is that there's no vote needed, it's just noted that there's a discussion of the goals.
Well, it's been an unusual conversation, but anyway. Forget what I said then.
Scratch.
I didn't make any motion, can edit that from the tape.
So the discussion of goals are not from here, it's from, from here? From the actual...
From the implementation plan. That's the overview for all departments.
Okay.
So you'll just have to look for the COA or Senior Center reference to see what the goal is there.
Right, because these are all the high, high bar.
That was just one excerpt from what Bob and Guido did before, just to look at the first year.
Okay.
So a lot of it had been done, except for housing, that's an ongoing thing, too, so.
Okay. And then we should also look at the medium, the ones that have medium priority?
Look at the whole, let's say, I'd say, look at the whole, only 12 pages, and then come up with your top 10. I mean, that's what I would suggest, and that everybody could bring in the next meeting, our own top 10, and then we'll try to come up with the top 10 for the council as a whole.
That's a good idea.
Something else may jump out while you're reading it, you know.
Right. But I think that's a good idea to come to the next meeting with either top five or top 10, maybe do top five.
Yeah, maybe five.
Top five, each of us have top five that we think are important, and then we'll see as a group, maybe you'll come up to top 10, I don't know.
We can address that when we meet, when we all meet again regarding it, so you'll have more of an idea what to ask or not ask. Just review it first.
Right, yeah, but I would say, I think we don't have a good idea. Come, next meeting, come with maybe the top five.
Of course, I agree.
But we have to have, first, we have to have the paperwork.
Yeah.
I don't have that paperwork they're talking about.
You will.
So we will, but is that going to be before the next meeting, we'll get that?
Oh, God, I hope so.
Yes, I'll get my staff, my line.
Oh, okay, okay. That makes sense.
Yeah, I hope most people can get it online, but Nancy, we'll get you a copy.
It's harder to read for me, so.
I don't do well online.
I'll try and send an email to the council when it's in your mail slots, how's that?
Good, thank you.
As long as I don't want to drive 20 courses.
You don't?
No.
We'll pay for you if you ask.
Okay, so the goals have been, the next discussion was, will be a moot point, because we had discussed about changing the size of the council, number of members on the council. Now we have two new members, so that is a moot point, no reason to discuss it.
I would suggest somehow tabling it to when the next round of new appointees comes up, perhaps we could again discuss the size before people are renewed or new people are...
Another, the future wasn't getting longer.
I would potentially recommend wording it as the next time that there's people, two people to be appointed that are not interested in continuing. I think at that point, that might be a good, because the people who are up next might want to continue.
Maybe a waitressing.
Right, but that would have to wait until...
But it would need to be discussed before it's posted as available slots.
Right, but I would think that, in fairness, it would have to be worded that it is only if the people who are up for reappointment don't want to continue.
Of course, yeah.
And I think we were also expecting Kim to have some input for us as to whether that's even in our purview. I mean, it's obviously going to be a recommendation to the select board, as they are the appointing authority.
Well, isn't it in the bylaws also?
But we wiped out the bylaws, they don't exist anymore.
And the decision would be up to the Board of Selectment.
Yeah, because we can vote on the new number, but we have to get absolution from the select board.
Right.
Yeah, I was just suggesting that it's before any other new members are appointed.
Yeah, well, yes.
Assuming two people may not want to continue, and then it gets posted and the people get appointed, it becomes moot again. It's just a suggestion.
Are you wanting more people or less people? Oh, okay, got it.
Yeah, 11 was seeing, compared to others, it's unwieldy. You guys have to make sure we're not unwieldy.
Got it.
The women, how many questions we can ask?
No, it's okay to ask questions, that's how we work.
One of the things we could do is could the two new members introduce themselves?
I know.
Did we miss that?
No, she was coming to that, about introducing the new members.
They will be in the acknowledgements. And stay tuned. I didn't forget. Okay, member subsize, go on. Election dates, we had discussed how we're going to have, when we were going to have the next elections, because that was never, I guess they used to do it in September, and then they did it in July, I don't know, and it seems to be like a rolling date. So I was just trying to...
Through the committee handbook, there are set dates, and that would be in June.
So fiscal year.
Yes, I'm trying to look at...
I think it's typically July with the formation of the new committee, right? Because it typically starts July.
Because I thought some committees had used calendar year for elections, but did they all?
Potentially, like the select board uses the, does it write its elected body, so it does it write after the election, right? So it is different for different committees, but most committees' appointments are July 1 to June 30, right? So it makes sense to that.
So it would be...
Okay, they answered our question.
Once you would read on the new board.
It would be at whatever point the first meeting in July is, would be when the election would be. So if it's July 2nd, it would be on July 2nd.
I don't know that that's hard and fast rule, but that's difficult, please.
July meeting next year will be, July 13th, I think.
But just to throw in a little historical information here, the reason I think it was set as September for the council is that, yes, people, new people would be appointed as of July 1st, usually at the end of June, and we usually took at least a month off, one, either July or August would not be meeting, and September was the second month. So the first month, we would be getting used, you know, getting to know the new members and schedule the election for September, so that then in September, you actually have the election. So that was the logic behind September as the...
I think, so it would be my recommendation...
And we're talking about officers, by the way, just so everybody knows.
It would be my recommendation that the first meeting in July is the election, and like this year, we could take August off and start new in September with a new slate of officers. That would be my recommendation.
So I think it's July 13th next year.
Yeah, I don't, whatever that first meeting is in July, I don't know the date, but I think that that would probably make the most sense for us.
Yeah, so 13. So, any other comments on that, or are you a little uncomfortable going fiscal year for election, or?
That does require a vote. That does require a vote.
Septem, September, not July, but September.
No, no, we're saying September. I'm sorry, we're saying July, and we would have, to take August off, that would be the month in the summer that you would take off and start with the new officers in September that had been voted in in July.
So you're aware without September.
So it's still July 13th.
Technically, then it would be August 1st through July 30th of the following year.
No, no, the appointment would take place in July and go until June of the next year.
It's July to June.
Yes.
So there'd be no, no one to run the meeting in July?
That's when the election would take place, so it would be...
And who would be the chairman during July?
The current chair, and then the current chair would hold the election before the new one.
So the current chair is chaired through the end of July?
The handoff would be in July.
It is what we did this year.
Yeah. And I think the plan would be to take August off, if you guys usually take off one month in the summer, that would make sense.
Okay. Make a motion? Make a motion?
If I can think of a word, I move that we have election of officers in July, and to have the month of August off and to have them take their positions at the meeting in September.
There comes it.
I think just for, we would have to also have that their term is up in June of the following year.
And their term will be up in June of the following year.
I disagree.
Very good, Darrell.
So if they're elected, they should immediately go into taking over their office, otherwise you've got two groups.
Take over.
We'll just take over.
Hand over. This discussion between the two of them.
Fiscal meeting in August.
So for the select board, we have the election, it's the first thing we take care of in that meeting, and officially, that person is the chair as soon as that vote happens. So in July, you start off with the month, and that person's the chair.
That's kind of the way it works for me.
So the end date is the next election.
You voted me in July and had August off and decided September.
That makes sense.
That's not that way.
I have a question. We're building our Senior Center, hoping to bring in more people, why do we take the month of August off? I mean, shouldn't we be a sitting board?
Well, I don't, I mean, this is my fifth year, because that's the way it's been. So it happened before, I guess, whoever chose August before.
A lot of people go away also.
Right, it's kind of vacation time, you know.
Yeah, I mean, most councils on aging either take off a month in the summer or they take off the month of December. It's either or, but typically, everyone takes off one month.
Okay, July 13, 2026.
So now we need a motion.
Hold G motion.
I'd like to make an amendment. I would like to eliminate the specific of the month of August. There's no reason for that to be in this motion, it's just, it's immediately after the election, the new chair, the new officers take their votes. And whether we take a vacation or not, it's another...
Good for you.
Okay, so voted as amended? Okay, one person?
No, we have to make the second.
Okay, oh, second? Two seconds left, with the amendment.
That was, and now it's open for a vote.
Okay, now we vote.
Yes.
All in favor?
Yes.
Okay. Council on Training Office.
So I have reached out to some of the other Council on Aging chairs in the area, and before I invited them to a meeting formally, I wanted to let you know that there is some willingness to come and to do a training, a little bit more specific about the responsibilities of the Council on Aging Board, and maybe some of the more modern practices of a COA. So I think that planning for November and December can be really tricky, because that's usually when people are busiest, but potentially, starting the new year with a training like that, as long as that works for the board, I think that we could put together a good training. And that would be through other local councils on aging.
Was there a date on it? Was there a date?
I was suggesting the January meeting, I just feel like November and December is when people are away the most.
Not before, it's my birthday.
I don't know, I don't know when the January meeting...
Any question? Any questions about the training?
It will be here, the training.
Yes, yeah, it would take place during a Council on Aging meeting and just be more of a discussion about how other towns run their councils on aging. And Jen is actually here to talk about the next...
Agenda item.
Jen from Recreation. That's why I was like, I know she said two. Jen?
Thank you. My name is Jen Kirkland, I'm the Recreation Director for the town, and I'm just here to talk a little bit about Article 7, about repairing the pool at the community center. I'll just go through some, you know, high-level facts of what we're proposing, but I'll be happy to try to answer any questions at the end, if you have them. So Article 7 seeks, is seeking a transfer from available funds in the amount of $799,675 for the purpose of repairing the pool at the community center. And I'll go through what is involved, or what is, what that costs include. So the pool repairs itself, that bit came in at $529,000. We also add in a seven and a half percent contingency. When we're open, you know, when we start doing construction in the pool, if there were to be something that was unforeseen, we have a little bit of money in the amount of $39,675 kind of set aside to take care of that. If all goes well and we don't end up needing it, that money goes back, so it's just kind of there as an insurance policy. We also need to purchase in a new rooftop units HVAC pool pack, so that is $220,000. If you remember from last spring town meeting, the community center, we purchased a whole other set of HVAC units, we pulled the pool pack out because we knew we were going to pass over the pool, and those other units were eligible for rebates, and this pool pack wasn't, so it made sense to not purchase them then. But in order to get the pool online and running, we need these, we need this HVAC unit. We also need to do some sprinkler repairs in where the pool is for $11,000, and that brings us to the total of $799,675. The pool repairs include reducing the depth of the pool to allow for more aquatic programming. Right now, the pool is straight across four feet, we'll be reducing that to three and a half, three feet, six, yeah, three and a half feet. After talking with our architect and pool consultant, that depth makes it a lot easier for a variety of different aquatic programs, from kids to adults to seniors, but it also for a variety of different aquatic programs, from kids to adults to seniors, but it also still allows for, for lap swimming. We'll replace all of the pool pipe, all the pool piping and fittings, the pool deck equipment, like the railings and things like that, the pool filtration system, like I said, the pool pack, HVAC pool pack, and the sprinkler head replacement. So when we talk about the useful life of this, this came up at a couple of meetings, the liner of the pool is expected to last twenty-five years, we're at an advantage being inside, where we're not dealing with the elements of being outside, you know, it's freezing and thawing, there's no risk of a tree falling on it and damaging it, so outside of any crazy circumstance, we should be looking at a useful life of that for about twenty-five years. The pool filtration system, the tank where the filtration system lives, again, twenty years, and the equipment itself, ten to fifteen years. So we're looking at some pretty, a long term, we're replacing all this now, it's not like we're coming back next year saying, hey, we need to repair this filter or things like that, so. So why we want to repair the pool, it's definitely the most requested amenity, we did a couple of surveys, the senior needs assessment survey was done, and a pool was called out in that as an amenity that people wanted. And during all of the public outreach and the surveys that we did with the architect for when we, after we purchased the building, a pool scored highly as well. And then just every day, or not every day, but as people come through the community center, the most asked question has to be, when is the pool going to be fixed, when can we use the pool? So it is definitely something I think that people, people want. It would allow for us to expand programming for all ages, so from, like I said, from babies all the way up through seniors, there's a whole host of things that we'd be able to do with a functioning pool. Right now, if you've been there, I think many of you have, you've seen it, the only thing, it's, it's underutilized, we can't use that space for anything, anything else right now, or, at all, so it's an underutilized area. And the program model, which I'll talk about, will be self-sustaining, so it'll operate very, exactly how we run all of our other rec programs, but I'll get into that in, in a second. So just, we found that, we think, after talking, a self-sustaining program to me, that's, I live that every day, but I've realized that maybe other people don't, so I'll just quickly give you an example of what a self-sustaining program is. When I, when we run rec basketball, that's the example I'm going to use, we don't come to town meeting in the spring and say, hey, I need twenty thousand dollars for rec basketball. What, what the participant, what people pay to play rec basketball covers all of the costs associated with running that program, the jerseys, the referees, the basketballs, anything that we need to pay for court time, it is all covered in the fees. And so that is what, what I mean when I say, or if you hear someone say a self-sustaining program, that's what it is, people, there is a fee to participate that covers all of the costs of running that, that program. So the expenses related to running the pool, mainly maintenance, so chemicals, testing, cleaning, basic repairs, nothing crazy like, it's like what we're doing now, just basic, you know, upkeep, utilities and staffing. In order to run the pool, we would obviously need lifeguards, and we also need a certified pool operator to, to be on staff, to have the pool open. Revenues that we would expect to collect would be contract fees. So the model that we're proposing is that a vendor would pay the rec department to use the pool for exclusive use for swim lessons during certain times of the week, and I'll show you an example, or I'll talk about an example of a schedule in a second. And then any other program fees collected by us for open swims, special events, birthday parties, things like that. So the vent, to just talk a little bit about the vendor contract, so we would partner with this vendor, and he would provide all aquatic services for us, including a certified pool operator, and that is huge, because that certified pool operator is required to, you know, test the water multiple times a day, seven days a week, and they would be responsible for a lot of the pool maintenance. In turn, the vendor would also pay us a fee, they would, we would take money in for them to use, so they could use the space and run their swim lessons, so people would pay to use, to pay to, register for swim lessons to this vendor, and the vendor would pay us a monthly fee. In the contract, I want to be clear, we include safeguards that protect Westboro residents, so we would be sure that Westboro residents get first priority to sign up for these swim lessons, we would make sure that the costs of these swim lessons weren't outrageous, there are things that we can do to make sure that Westboro residents are, like I said, protected, and that's similar to what we do now, a lot of times, if we know a program might be, you know, we might not be able to fill it with only Westboro residents, we'll let Westboro residents have the first three weeks to register, after that, we open it up. But a program like, I'll use rec basketball again, we know that will fill, we don't allow outside residents, so very similar. And another thing with this contractor, contract, would be that we could contract with them for lifeguards, so if we were going to run birthday parties or a special event, instead of having to go out and hire my own lifeguards, they have, and I say this every time, a pool of lifeguards that we could contract with and use in turn for our, for our programs. So we've put some estimated costs around what it would cost to run the pool monthly, and I know you can't see this slide, but we're estimating monthly expenses to come out to seven thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars, but our monthly revenue estimating to be eight thousand three hundred and fifty dollars. So we feel we, we have enough money, and this is just from the revenue that we would collect from the vendor as that, like, lease payment for using the pool. So on top of that, the rec department would charge program fees for open swim. None of this is set in stone, once we get there, we would have to kind of figure out what makes sense. And speaking with other towns that have pools, a lot of times, if there's, you know, open swim, there's a monthly membership for, and in different tiers, so, you know, families maybe are charged one price, seniors another, similar again to a lot of the program that we do now. Host birthday parties, people are already starting to ask for birthday parties just in the building itself, an aquatic birthday party is definitely something that could be a revenue maker as well. So an example of a pool schedule would, would be that, basically from, we're saying eight in the morning until about two, one, two o'clock in the afternoon would be the town's time to program. So we have, like, for an example, Monday, Wednesday, Friday would be senior lap or free swim, that would be exclusive to seniors, other times, just open free swim for the general public. Moving forward from about four o'clock into the evening, about seven o'clock would be when that vendor has time, their, their access to run swim lessons for varying ages. They would also have Saturday mornings as well to run, to run their programming. But again, built into this contract would be some safeguards, is, you know, for example, one Friday night a month, I get to have the pool for a special program. Saturday afternoons are also open, so that would be another space that we could program things for the public. So that is pretty much it. I know I talk fast, so if I missed anything, or I wasn't clear, please, I'm happy to answer any questions, I don't know how, should I just call on Pete, or go to the chair?
So Jen, I don't know if you're aware that the Finance Committee is recommending that the town vote against releasing the monies for this repair. The Select Board is recommending that the town vote to approve it. Will you or someone else be presenting at the town?
Oh yeah, Kim usually does this presentation, and so Kim will present, and obviously I'll be there, but we'll present at town meeting, it is on the warrant.
Right.
So we won't, we're not passing over it this time, we're going to let, I think, the discuss, this discussion was at the Select Board meeting, that it seems that we want the town to just decide, do we want the pool, do we want to repair it, do we want to spend the money on it, so.
Right.
We are going to present and have town meeting vote.
Yeah, but it sounds like the Finance Committee would prefer that these monies be used for something else, you know, now that they're against the pool, but they feel like there's other priorities, but the Select Board thinks, you know, it should go through. So, so I guess we'll find out on Tuesday.
We'll find out, yeah.
So you would be asking for the taxpayers to be funding this?
No, so it's gonna, so.
Where's the funding coming from?
Yep, I'll explain, so I'm the furthest thing from a finance director, but I got a briefing this morning on how to explain this, so free cash isn't certified yet, so it's going to come from overlay surplus. And so what overlay surplus is, is every year, town meeting appropriates overlay, which is money that is set aside for any difference that we need to make up in taxes that maybe have exemptions or abatements, things like that. That fund over time builds up, and every year, the assessor looks at that account and can release, they don't do it every year, but when there is enough money in there, there's, if there's excess in that account, they can release a certain amount of money into, to be used for other things, or it would just close out to free cash. Sean, I don't know if I said that well, but that's basically, essentially, it's not free cash, but it, it basically is, it does not impact the tax base at all.
But the Finance Committee says, which is, I think, very misleading, the tax rate already a concern, committee recommends deferring this project.
Sorry, I, they said, I'm, I missed.
They said with the tax rate already a concern for many residents, the committee recommends deferring this project. So that's what they're, how they're explaining, but I, I heard the same thing that, you know, Ms. Kim said that, that it's, it would not.
It does, it's not.
Not affect the tax rate, so that's a little confusing.
Maybe it's old information that they were working.
This is what they, they had today of the town hall meetings, I mean, at the, at the office, so I, you know, I don't know, but, because that, that's a big deal, that's what everybody is concerned about, the tax rate, so if it's not impacting your tax rate, you know.
I don't, I, yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure, I did listen to their conversation, and I know they, I did know what they voted, we, well, I don't know, yeah, I'm gonna, I don't want to speak out of turn, but we don't use free cash typically to reduce the tax levy, so I don't know, I, I'm not sure. But like I said, we'll make this presentation, and I assume that Christie usually, the town manager, has some opening remarks at the beginning of town meetings, so I'm sure that she will go over, you know, kind of the funding sources, because I believe there's a few other articles that are also going to use this source.
Yes.
So I'm sure that she will go over that in more detail and make it clear.
And do you know if, I mean, how many bids we?
Oh, sure, yep.
Were there like, two bids, five?
We, we only received one bid, back in the spring, we also only received one bid. The problem is, is that there aren't a ton of contractors that do this type of work, so our pool, or the architect wasn't so surprised that we only saw one bid, yeah.
All right, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
No problem.
Yeah, I have a question about programming.
Oh, sure.
And, and lifeguards.
Yeah.
You talked about the vendor being responsible for, for the lifeguards. And you also talked about free, free time, which is in the mornings, which tends to be, I think, you quoted the time sort of frames where it's free swim or whatever, but one of the programs that seniors are particularly interested in is water aerobics. And is that something that you have been thinking about? And that's not lifeguards, that's an instructor.
Absolutely, so it would be the same, so we would, in that time where, kind of, I'm free to program with, for whatever, aerobics has definitely been a conversation, so we would program it then, and similar to, I think, how, I mean, obviously I could work with Kendra as well, but, you know, you pay a small fee now for classes, so it'd be structured similarly, where we would have to make sure we cover the cost of the instructor, but yeah, absolutely, it's definitely something that we would plan to offer.
Agreed, thanks.
Yeah, of course, yeah.
Do you have senior discounts? It's the only time I ask, the only time I made him a senior.
It is what I want to discount.
Yeah, so we haven't really flushed out rates yet in regards to, you know, monthly pass fees and things like that. In the rec department, though, I can tell you, we're not looking to make a ton of money, so whatever we have to charge to cover our costs is what we'll charge. However, there are instances where other, so again, rec basketball does bring in quite a bit of revenue that we don't always need, so then, in turn, we can use some of that money to offset some costs for other programs, it's why, you know, we have done, you know, once a month, we offer like this playtime, we have like a storyteller come in, and it's about three hundred dollars, but we're able to kind of offset that cost, it's free for people, but we offset that cost using other revenue. So similar here, I think that we'd be able to offer, you know, seniors at a discounted rate for, you know, if we were to go the monthly pass route, or, you know, programs, things like that, and I, like I said, we can always, I can always work with Kendra to see how, you know, she prices things out, so it'll be a collaborative effort for sure. But yeah, we'll take care of you.
Just a comment, this one concerns me a lot.
The pool, or?
No, after I read the comments from the Finance Committee, so I'm, I know you, you guys are going to present all this, correct?
Yes.
I think it's so important that people really, because you came and presented at Delaware Chancal Lake, and it was, it was brilliant, I mean, I, I didn't understand that it was free cash, I didn't understand that it was self, you know, so I'm hoping that how you present really gets those points across.
Yeah, and Kim is usually the speaker, she speaks a lot better than I do, but, but she'll, she'll present this, and I think, you know, we'll be ready for questions, and it, we, I really do know that we can run this to be self-sustaining, it's just a matter of that initial investment of the seven ninety-nine, is if people want to pay it or not, so.
What happens to that space if it's not used for the pool?
You know, I don't.
It just sits there?
Yeah. Yeah. I don't think that we'll come back again, so to back up a little bit, we, we decided to pull the pool out as a, kind of a standalone project versus repairing the pool with the rest of the building, because we feel like it's an asset and it's something that we could, you know, start programming pretty immediately, but I don't think that we'll come back for a standalone, as a standalone project, we would just probably wait until whenever we get to the point of fitting up the rest of the building.
And I think, I mean, two things I think are important, one is that it's, it's not, the expense is not requiring taxes to go up, and then number two, I think, you, you had said that, it was a, a big sell for the population in Westboro, so when they said they, they think the money should be used for other priorities, I don't know what the other priorities are, but this was something that was very well received, so.
Yeah, we'll have to see on Tuesday, I'm not sure, you know, the Finance Committee has a tough job, they're, you know, trying to balance, I'm sure that there's a bunch of people in their ear about spending and things, so, but we'll see on, on Tuesday.
I'm curious why they, if it's coming basically for free cash, usually that's within the article, says free cash.
So at the time, when the warrant was printed, I think free cash was, they weren't sure, so they put available funds, so that that gives some flexibility of what the source can be, and now, since free cash isn't certified, they're using this overlay surplus, so I think that's why it's a little bit more vague than, than typical.
And the amount wasn't included either?
At one point, because, I think, no, when we went to the Finance Committee, they knew the amount, when we went to the Select Board.
Yeah.
Oh, right, but now, I think in the most updated one, the amount should be there. But I don't know, but yeah.
Any other question? Thanks.
See you too, Steph, tomorrow.
Thanks, Jen.
Yeah, thank you.
Vote in support of the article.
Oh, that's right. So the council. For Article Seven, it would be nice if the council voted in support of Article Seven, so if anyone wants to make a motion that we got.
I will motion that.
Okay, Jen, anyone second?
Second.
Second.
Two seconds.
What are we voting?
Supporting Article Seven.
Supporting Article Seven.
So if we're at town meeting and we have, if they ask for people to do that microphone thing, so one of us could go up and support it.
It's Diane.
Ah, awesome, okay.
All right, so we should vote, unless there's a discussion.
Okay. All right, second, and then, so voted, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye aye.
I'm abstaining until I hear more at the town meeting.
Pardon?
I am abstaining until I hear more at the town meeting.
Okay, it's not, it's not, so, we have eleven now?
Ten today.
It passed with two of us.
So, so nine?
Yeah, I have that down.
Nine, the majority, nine, yes, two abstain.
I think there's only ten here today.
Yeah, Daryl's, oh, right.
Thank you, Jen.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jen.
See you tomorrow.
See you tomorrow night. Yep. With long fingers crossed. Okay, upcoming, we're down to the next section of, upcoming events, usually every year, the holiday fair is November 15th, nine to two, and it's gonna change as far as when the supporters can access the building to start setting up. So the building, on November 12th, the Wednesday before, you can, they'll be setting up tables after two on that Wednesday. And then on Thursday, November 13th, the area will be available at 11:05, so you can start setting up, putting merchandise on the tables after 11:05 on Thursday, November 13th. And we have the full day on Friday, the 14th, to utilize the area and set up whatever's left. Okay?
And the funds for this go to support the senior center?
Yes, yes. They're, they're a nonprofit entity, separate from us, but they, whatever they raise, it's towards the senior center events and et cetera. And in every, I have a sheet to send around, every year, the council has, they have a turkey raffle basket, and every year, the council members sign up for whatever items they would like to on this list I'm gonna pass around. Bless you, bless you.
What's this list, what's this list that you're passing?
Pun.
What is this list that you're passing around?
Right here, it's a list of items, if you want to donate to that turkey raffle basket.
Oh.
Items they put in the basket.
Oh, okay.
So you can drop it off either that Wednesday after two, or the, that Thursday after 11:05.
Oh, your donation.
Yeah, on the donation, yeah. And there will be somebody, I think, Jean from senior, from the supporters group, will be around to guide you to the first pool table where to put the items for the turkey raffle.
And what date did you say you had to start this?
What day?
What's the date we bring that stuff in?
It's, Wednesday after two, November 12th. Or after 11:05 on Thursday. I love saying that, 11:05.
Because we wait until the Saturday, because we don't have a lot of space.
Right. So there's a list going around, what are we all signed up for, the turkey raffle?
Diane, can, can the, can cash be also given, so they can buy the turkey, or?
I've already put down I'm gonna get a gift certificate to the turkey.
Yeah, okay.
Oh, that's cool.
One of the items was the gift card for the turkey.
Oh, this, okay.
No, we actually have a basket that they put out every year, and we fill it.
Okay. The next thing is, I'd like to welcome our two new members, if they'd like to introduce themselves.
After you.
They're pointing to each other.
I'm Carolyn McLeod, I've lived at the Orchard Hill Community, 55 plus since 2010. Career-wise, I had a lengthy career at Harvard University, my last job was Director of Accounting Operations, so I'm a numbers person. After I retired, about a year, I was bored, I decided to explore becoming a shine counselor, and I've been a shine counselor for 17 years.
Wow.
At South Borough, I actually mentored.
So you like being on a council?
I actually mentored Bill LePrade, I also mentored Donna Zimmerman, who's there now, your two shine counselors. And I have a degree in gerontology that I never really did anything with, so it sort of helped me with my shine work, and, and I decided that I want to give back to the town of Westboro, and it seemed like a good way to do it, and I'm looking forward to working with you all.
Well, thank you very much, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
And my name is Evelyn Ebb, just call me Ev, everybody does, and I moved here 40 years ago, I'm originally from New York, lived in Marlboro for a while, and I did go to the Westboro Civic Leadership Academy, and I fell in love with the place, I just think it's just darling here, I love Westboro, 21,000 residents, 1,100 businesses, it's, it's manageable, and in, whatever you believe, in a world gone wild, where you can't really make a difference, I joined the Westboro TV Board, I was very eager to join this board just to, to make a difference, and I retired a month and a half ago, and I want to feel good at the end of my day, so these are the things I do. I have a media background, I ran a division of IDG, International Data Group, we're a $50 million media property, print, online, and events, and I like to be helpful and, and have fun, and most importantly, learn a lot of new things. Oh, we did have, when I was, my last job was a nonprofit publisher called Chop Chop Family, and we did cooking magazines for low-income families, SNAP, hence why I'm retired, because that's no longer with us, SNAP Ed. But one of the magazines we had was called Seasoned, which was for older adults, for a cooking magazine for older adults, so I got to know a lot about COA, and the triple As, and senior centers, and the vendors who support that world, so this is just a natural option. Thanks for having me.
Do you know, and we have a board?
I don't know anybody here.
Okay.
I know Martha, we're, oh, we're from the same community in Delaware Chancery.
So you're all set. I'm Diane Collins, currently Chair of the Council.
I'm Nancy Fallon.
I'm Marsha Brown.
I'm Guido Leonardo.
Paula Zeko. Marilyn Taylor, and I also lived in Orchard Hill before I moved to the Willows.
Linda Birch and I live at.
Don't pop quiz me, okay?
How long have you been a member of the council?
Probably 15, 16.
Oh.
Been a while.
A veteran.
The next one is future agenda items. I have housing authority in the future, and is there anything else, or is that okay for now, or?
Oh, we, we want to do the.
Housing authority.
Pun.
Yeah, that's what she said.
She just, yes, she. Oh, I missed that, sorry, I thought I, she just, I just heard the housing.
I have the housing authority on, for future agenda items.
Right, and Martha was saying. The five goals that we each want to bring, once we read the implementation plan?
Yeah, okay, so I'll have, I'll put in a reading assignment for the council members. How's that?
Well, just a continuation of the.
The goal discussion.
It's ongoing, so. Okay, I think that's all I have, any other?
So the next meeting is?
Oh, I have, will be on November, I think it's the 10th, I think.
November 10th is the second Monday.
Yeah, it's the 10th.
Is the day we're closed?
We're open on the 10th.
Because the next day is a holiday, right?
I think the 11th is always on.
Yeah, that's right.
So next meeting date, November 10th, 1:00. There'll be a test on the implementation plan, no kidding. Okay, any motion to adjourn? Move to adjourn? Now, with Guido. Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you. You had a first and a second, you have to take.
Oh, I always forget that second.
Turkey first.
Oh, she did, okay.
It's coming around. You had a first and a second.
All in favor of adjourning?
All in favor of adjourning?
Aye.
That's unanimous.
Thank you, Sharon.